I'd like to call to order October thirteenth legislative meeting. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Someroduma is President of the Board. We will move forward because we have quite a few things to do today. And our first order of business is a silent prayer. If you could take a moment for a silent prayer and then stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. Thank you. Amen. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you so much. We have in front of us, we all just came from the firefighters memorial. We'll talk more about that in a few minutes. Those firefighters that have passed away in the last year. So that's why I have the blown, the windblown look. We're rushing in and that's why we've made our meeting a little bit late. So, so a proclamation and recognition of National Hispanic Latino Month. Are you presenting that?
I am. You are. Yes. And Alfonso Corniejo is here. If you would please come forward. He is the President of the Hispanic Chamber. He is here to receive the proclamation. So thank you for being here. We're delighted to recognize this month. I'm going to read just a little bit of the proclamation because we do have many things on the agenda. But I think it's really important to recognize the contribution of not only your work, but the work of the community here in Hamilton County as we work to embrace the diversity that exists within Hamilton County. So I'm going to read just a couple of the whereas clauses. In recognition of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, whereas during National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, we recognize that Hispanic Latino heritage is American heritage as we promote this year's theme, united inclusivity for a stronger nation. And whereas Hamilton County is proud to be home to a growing Hispanic Latino community who has strengthened the rich culture of our region. And whereas the Latino Hispanic community population in our region has grown by nearly 50% during the last census, representing one of the fastest growing minority groups in our county. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize the strength and significant cultural contribution of the Hispanic Latino community and does hereby proclaim September fifteen through October fifteen, twenty twenty-two as Hispanic Latino Heritage Month in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you. Let me just say that I'm honored to receive this proclamation. And as, as you know, we are growing and growing and growing. And my only hope is that with this grow, with this grow, that is, you know, you are the only, the only group that is growing in the state of Ohio. And we think that as we continue to grow, we will expect and hope to have more influence in the decisions of the state, the county, and the city of Cincinnati. But we're very, very honored to be here and I'm out framing this proclamation in our office so you can, everybody can go to see. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Just from the chair, I'd like to say as a board, we've been very purposeful as we look at cultures. And so this started a couple of years ago. We need to continue it and we certainly will, but thank you so much for accepting this proclamation.
Just great seeing you again. We have worked together for over twenty plus years. So thank you and looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you much.
Hey, we have one additional proclamation recognizing and honoring Jennifer Mooney, Vice President Reese.
That one's mine as well. Well, listen, this one, this one is bittersweet. Jennifer Mooney has been working with the Health Department for a number of years now. But I know Jenny because she serves on the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition. And I've known you longer than that, but the, the importance of having public health at the table. When we talk about saving lives, getting people into recovery and long-term progress. Public health has been so important when it comes to data and driving decisions related to data and what we know is working in this community. And Jenny Mooney has been the lead providing us with all that information so that we can make good decisions. And you've just been a critical part of that conversation. You are critical when, when we do the alerts. Your perspective is just so important. You're smart. You're dedicated. I can't say enough about what we feel about you as HCRK and also as the County Commission. So I couldn't pass upon the occasion of Jenny moving. She's now going to be the Director of Public Health in Northern Kentucky. So we'll have a great relationship now with the folks in Northern Kentucky. So that's good news, but we're really going to miss Jennifer at public health. And Greg Kesterman, the Director of Public Health is with us as well. So I'm going to read this one. It's not super long, but I, you know, I'm going to read this one. All right. This is recognizing and honoring Jennifer Mooney. Whereas Dr. Jennifer Mooney, Assistant Health Commissioner for Hamilton County Public Health, is moving on to assume a role of Director of the Northern Kentucky Health Department. And whereas Dr. Jennifer Mooney played an integral role in the region's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Dr. Jennifer Mooney led the Community Health Services Division at Hamilton County Public Health during her tenure, implemented a highly successful harm reduction program regarded as one of the best in the country. And whereas Dr. Jennifer Mooney has led Hamilton County's Tuberculosis Prevention and Treatment Program, STI Prevention and Treatment Programs in the agency's clinical services. And whereas Jennifer Mooney managed the agency's epidemiology, health promotion, and education divisions toward award-winning, data-driven, public and population health initiatives. And whereas Jennifer Mooney has been a champion for public health and a valued and respected leader among her colleagues. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners recognize Dr. Jennifer Mooney's contributions to the health and well-being of the residents of Hamilton County. And be it further proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare this thirteenth day of October, twenty twenty-two is Jennifer Mooney Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse and, you know, all of you. I really appreciate this honor. I don't really feel I'm that special, but this is pretty amazing. I have to say though, that this is bittersweet. And I have an amazing team back there, sitting in the back of the room that really carried this county forward during a period of true peril. And I couldn't be proud, prouder to have worked for this tremendous agency with great leadership. The Commissioner's been fantastic and I've learned so much from him and I hope to carry that forward in Northern Kentucky, but I appreciate the honor today.
Great. From the chair, I'd just like to say you are a legend before your time. I've heard a lot about you, but really didn't get to work with you until we started the One Ohio Foundation, just for a brief time to work with you. So, and I wonder if Northern Kentucky would make a day for you. So I will pass it over and then anyone in the back that would also like to make a comment, Vice President Reese.
I just want to say congratulations. Now you said you have a great team. Now we've lost one member of the team, Commissioner Kestner. No, no, you can't take any of them with you. Cut off the bridges and all that. Not allowed, not allowed. But congratulations and we look forward to continue to working with you because we know that there are no borders.
Yes.
When we're talking about public health.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any of your entourage would like to speak?
I'll just briefly say thanks for honoring Jenny. It's been a pleasure working with her and we'll continue that relationship with Northern Kentucky. So wonderful job.
You're going to take a picture now? I want your shoes.
I was going to take the picture with Jenny in it.
Okay.
We're in action. We'll get their picture. There we go. Thank you, Commissioners.
So up next we have public comments. I have a few here. Lisa, when are you here? Oh, okay, okay. Alrighty, she's here to speak about solid waste. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I forwarded a document to you in an email and I had intended to provide copies for everybody, but kind of hard to carry things on crutches. So if anybody wants a copy, I'd be more than happy to provide it. The document was prepared by the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. Document answers questions about rules, fees, designations, and authorities that have been delaying the current process. During the last meeting, there was discussion about raising the out-of-state, out-of-district fees for solid waste. There was a couple of members of the committee concerned about not being neighborly and the impact of increasing fees on neighboring counties. It is interesting to note that in this report, it shows that Butler County already has the highest out-of-district fees for solid waste at $4. In the vein of concern for the neighboring counties, it was decided to spend $100,000 of taxpayers' monies on a study of the impact of increasing the fees on revenues and essentially the possible impact on RUMKEE revenues. My question is, how much has been spent on the study of the impact of the, on the health of host communities, both physically and mentally? How much money's been spent on studies to determine the economic impact on the community in which these landfills exist? How much has been spent on a study to determine the cost on the environment from increased traffic, tree cutting, resulting runoff and scavenger birds on private systems? How about a study of the impact on breathing methane on children growing up in the proximity of these current landfills? How about a study of the impact on Hamilton County when the distinction of having the largest landfill in the nation raises to second or third from sixth when Bond Road is factored in? The document summary states, the question is, how do we improve upon the existing law to provide everyone opportunities to be more effective? The lawsuit settlement is a direct opposition to this idea and the whole process has already ignored the plight of senior citizens and others who care about their home. Please don't let our rights for a solid waste plan be dictated by a company with a budget for big lawyers. The biggest thing I hear from people, members of the ditch the dump, is that we don't have a chance because of all the money and influence. Don't prove them. Please, don't, don't prove them right.
Thank, thank you so much, Lisa. I appreciate it. And any information that you're trying to receive from us, we'll give you what we have and also you have already sent information. We'll make sure that everyone has it on the board.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Tim Mara.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, here we go again, discussing the county's solid waste rules. It's been a wild roller coaster ride over the last year. Please keep in mind that you first received proposed rules from the Solid Waste District's Policy Committee last December. And before sending you those proposed rules, the committee debated the various proposals for some time. I don't remember Rumke saying much specific about the rules during that process. And when the rules came to you in December last year, they were, in my opinion, modest. They were based on rules adopted in other districts. They were not innovative, not very demanding of solid waste permit applicants. The rules were important, but not groundbreaking or strict. So when we came to your meeting on December sixteen, we were presented with a revised set of rules that had been watered down, which were not very exciting and not very effective compared to the original. And that's what differed than what the policy committee sent to you and recommended. I remember on December sixteenth expressing my disappointment in the much watered down rules, but I urged you to approve them anyway because at least for the first time, the county was adopting rules to provide some level of protection for public health and the environment. And you did approve them. And as you know, Rumke then challenged the rules in court and the matter languished for months in court. It seemed to me that Rumke was using the litigation it initiated to avoid having the rules applied to Bond Road permits it had filed, including the increase in daily waste deposit and the permit for new access road. And then suddenly we find this week that the county and Rumke have reached an agreement which provides for substantial further watering down of the rules, making them weaker, making them less useful in protecting public health and the environment. Even more disturbing is the timing of this agreement. Because Ohio EPA, just on October five, had announced its decision to permit Rumke to increase the amount of waste deposit. And they had dismissed the complaint filed by an individual about no, no deposit being made for more than a year. That's three big decisions. Almost in the space of a few days. What a coincidence. It seems to me that the right thing to do today is nothing. You and your legal counsel have been negotiating for months. The public should have an opportunity to more carefully read and understand the damage that's been done to the rules. So I urge you to do nothing today, but bring this back up for consideration two weeks from now at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Now we have Marie Cocos, pronounce that for me. Cocos.
I'm just precocious.
Okay.
If that helps you. And it's cococious. Yes. So I am Marie Cococious and I today am representing the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area who has supported the original rules that Mr. Mara referenced that you passed in December sixteen of nineteen twenty-one. I am here to address the replacement rules, number four on the agenda. These rules favor Rumke and must be rescinded and new rules written in order to offer citizen protection from a solid waste facility in their neighborhood. From the fall of twenty twenty-one, the Policy Committee of the Hamilton County Solid Waste District wrote rules for solid waste facilities in Hamilton County. As a public entity, the, the policy committee was available to the public, open to the public, and citizens were able to attend and participate. The policy committer approved these rules, as did this body, the County Commissioners, as you know, on December sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Rumke filed suits and so here we are today. Faced with a new set of rules which allows for no public participation or review and no environmental, no protection from environmental consequences of a solid waste facility in their neighborhood. Approving a solid waste facility in Hamilton County is now solely in the hands of a single county executive. Before, obviously it was, would have been a different situation. These rules must be rejected and a new set of rules written by county attorneys. I suggest that the pre-existing rules, the ones that you voted in on December sixteenth, be set in place and enforced until a settlement is reached on the new rules. Local rules from the Solid Waste District offer a citizen a chance to participate and have some say about potential adverse impacts on their daily lives of a solid waste facility next door. Vote to rescind these rules and give citizens back their voice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We have two comments on Zoom. Carrie Davis. Oh, Rich is up now. So hello, Rich. Rich, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you get two minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I urge you do not approve the resolution rescinding the solid waste management rules and adopting new rules for the Hamilton County Solid Waste. The proposed rules represent no change in the status quo, do not improve quality of life, are not in the best interest of Hamilton County residents now and in the future. The proposed rules are in fact a step backward in the stewardship of our resources and will continue to erode the quality of life of Hamilton County residents and enhance importantly, environmental injustice. Few people want to live next to a landfill and to that end, landfills should be located as far away from people as possible. Recycling, a good environmental and economically sound strategy, will not reduce the need for landfills. Landfills will be with us for a long time. The effective operation of existing landfills will remain a priority and require constant attention and technological improvements. The new proposed rules will not require any of these changes. The Rumke landfill on Hughes Road is a nuisance to its neighbors. The landfill is the largest air polluter in the southwest Ohio region and generates twenty times more odor complaints than the next largest source. The landfill has an underground fire burning since two thousand and nine. This fire produces a leachate that is so caustic it can't go in our sewer line. It must be transported by truck to MSD. The landfill continues to sink up to twelve feet per year as the underground fire continues to consume waste. Rumke's denial that a fire exists and its continued operation of, of operations derives the likelihood that the fire will continue for years and could occur or reoccur in expanded landfill. I applauded the Solid Waste Committee for opening discussion of Hamilton County solid waste practices to public input. It's exactly what is needed to improve the waste management stewardship of the country. The pressure from Rumke and its lawyers to set back any improvement is always to be expected. What they have proposed and how they continue to operate the landfill will not be in the best interest of your electorate. This, Commissioners, is a fight worth having. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I appreciate your comments. Carrie Davis.
Good afternoon, ladies.
Good afternoon.
I have passed the point of anger to just pure disgust at what Ms. Dreehouse has proposed that her fellow commissioners pass. Has some historical information on why these committees were established. Is that two reasons. Some of us are old enough to remember barges traveling down rivers and out on the oceans loaded with garbage and nobody knew what to do with it. And the other reason all these rules were passed and this power was given to the commissioners was because of the corruption. Where the, the garbage industry was buying off politicians and welding improper and excessive influence over the process. For twenty years, Hamilton County sat on the sidelines while every county around us in the state and across the country passed rules to ensure corruption would not infiltrate our solid waste policies. This year you all were brave enough to pass historical rules that address the concerns of the federal and state legislator that proposed the, these programs. The rule and the settlement as proposed by Ms. Dreehouse is a reflection of the corruption of twenty years. And a power grab to attempt to strip the Board of Commissioners, and it does. It strips the Board of Commissioners of their powers and authority vested in them by these laws and hands it off to their administrator, who has the sole discretion whether to propose a rule and to the Environmental Department's director, who would then have the power. It strips the Solid Waste Committee from any participation and making any determinations regarding a proposed landfill. I recommend that the board tables this settlement agreement, sends it back for revisions with explanations for why they are changing it from the way it was originally proposed. And continue, Ms. Dreehouse, to please provide us with the public information, the legal opinions that you have been sitting on for over a year, the public records. Ms. Reese promised us an open and transparent process. Yes, ma'am.
Your two minutes are up.
Okay. I thank you all. Please stand with the residents and do not allow this corruption to be codified.
And thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. We are one of the few jurisdictions that even stepped out to even come up with rules in collaboration with other groups, the Solid Waste Group. And so I would like for either our staff or our legal person to just give a brief summary of what some of the changes were as it relates to the adjustment of the rules. And then lastly, I want to say that Commissioner Dreehouse does nothing by herself. She has to collaborate and partner with all the other commissioners that are up here. So to blame her for where this direction is going is unfair. We have to agree with or not agree with it. And so I just want to make that very clear. So did you want to speak just? And so I just want to make that very clear. So um, did you want to speak just a little bit, Holly?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Madam President. And I will also defer to both Michael Friedman and Pam Sears with our prosecutor's office to provide some additional details. But just as a summary for those who may be watching um, the comments you heard, um, yes, the board did pass solid waste facility rules on December sixteenth of twenty twenty one. Shortly thereafter in January, a civil action was initiated. Um, which leads us to where we are today, which are um, a settlement of that lawsuit. And what in high level summary, I just will provide the new rules which are designed to be legally defensible. Um, uh, applied to solid waste facilities in Hamilton County that are looking to cite or expand. Those facilities are um, solid waste landfills, transfer stations and class one and class two compost facilities. Um, in again, in high level summary, what these rules do is it requires anyone seeking an expansion or a new facility to submit a plan. To the board. The board then submits that to our experts at Environmental Services. Environmental Services will then publish a public notice. Of these of this uh, rules being of the proposed uh, plan being received. And they can then seek um, policy committee um, non-binding recommendations if they so choose. They then um. Receive all the comments from the public over those thirty day period and will provide a recommendation to the board. The district then prevent presents at the board meeting, which includes a public hearing. Um, that's a high level summary. There are, you know, um, some more specifics in the rules. Um, I will also say also included in these rules is an amendment process. That if the board does feel that these rules should be amended, there is a process to do so. Um, with that being said, again, kind of a high level summary, I will defer to Pam Sears if if you're okay with that or Michael Friedman. To talk through some of the um. Specifics, if that's okay with you. Good afternoon and thank you. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Pamela Sears. I'm a senior prosecutor with Hamilton County Prosecutor's Office. And one of the senior litigators in that office. And along with Mike Friedman was um, NR. Try, we are trial counsel in the Rumkey litigation. Um, first, let me say that I um, understand some of the concerns of the community. Um, one of the things that I'm a bit flummoxed about though is some of the comments. Uh, reflect to me that perhaps the rules were not perhaps. Read thoroughly and or maybe um, uh, understood thoroughly. Um, particularly, I'm thinking of the comments that would indicate. That the public, that there's no public comment. Uh, that the policy committee i- is not considered or that the rules as originally passed by this board have been um, watered down or effectively ignored. Um, none of those things are accurate. Um, when we look at the rules themselves and uh, I'll go through some of the concerns, but. If we look at the rules themselves, one of the concerns that I heard mentioned, not today, but uh, separate from today. Was that there originally in the rules was something called a compliance report. So there was an improvement plan and a compliance report. One of our, one of our goals in the litigation was to streamline the process, not to prevent public input. But to make it more efficient and effective. And the way we did that frankly was to fold the compliance report into what we now call a community impact statement. That's incorporated into the application process. So contrary to what people may think. Uh, in order to uh, convince the board that an expansion or modification is appropriate. The um, entity applying for such an expansion or modification or revision, if you will. Has to convince this board that that project will not have a detrimental effect. On the environment or the community beyond what is able to be mitigated. Or beyond what is absolutely necessary for this board to fulfill its other function. Which is to provide the utility in this community for the um, collection and disposal of solid waste. So as this board has uh, indicated to me, it understands that it has a role in both. Um, providing the community with a utility that collects and disposes of solid waste. At the same time, a responsibility to the community to see that that process is done in a way that is minimally. Affecting the quality of life of the community and or the environment. These rules frankly. Provide that balance. Um. In the compliance uh, in the plan uh, section of the rules. We completely adopted those provisions that were in the prior rules. So someone who is applying under these rules. Must indicate to this to this board. The type of solid waste disposal facility it is, a site plan map, drawings, a survey, size and capacity. Existing programs and its effect, the hours of operation and the anticipated source of solid waste and control of onsite debris. Additionally, that entity must provide a community impact statement. And when we look at this community impact statement, contrary to some of the comments I've heard today. It is actually more flexible, more expansive. And gives this board more of an opportunity to control environmental impact than the prior rules did. That might be difficult for some people to accept, but in fact it's true. And I would point you to um, section ten. Of the um, of the rules. It would be um, let me get the specific section.
I didn't want to really go specifically in there. I wanted to go through what Holly said, the changes in the summary. You indicated that um, that public not having involvement is disingenuous at best.
Yes.
So that's what really what I want.
Okay, I understand.
Uh, because I don't want to start a rebuttal and we're, you know, we're giving you all this time and other people have. Uh, you know, called in and so I think you've done a great job of uh, showing what the differences are if you wanted to.
All right, I'll, I'll just, I'll be a little bit more high level then if you like. I would just draw the uh, public's attention to section ten of section four B. Which provides that the entity making this application must address. Uh, nuisance issues, odor issues, litter issues, uh, effect on uh, um, quality of life issues. And we've specifically adopted some definitions from the Ohio Administrative Code to make the document legally defensible. As to public comment and public participation. We uh, have a section in the rules that provides for upon getting an application, as Holly said. That application is published. There are public comments that are taken. Those public comments are then put before the policy committee and or the policy committee is involved in the process. At the discretion of the um, Director of Solid Waste. There has been some. Con- conversation around the fact that there's a perception that these rules. Eliminate the role of the policy committee or somehow water it down. Let me explain something to you. The policy committee is a creature of statute. This board is a creature of statute. As a matter of law, public entities only have the powers and duties provided to them by statute. By statute, the policy committee has absolutely no role in regulation of the solid waste district. The policy committee has a statutory role, which is important in the. In the production of the plan and um, the preparation of the solid waste district plan. The policy committee had a role by virtue of this board allowing them to have it in the creation of the original draft of the rules. But the policy committee has no statutory role in the regulation of the rules. In determining whether or not projects are um, allowable or not. This that rests solely with this board. The other uh, concern frankly is um, that as members of the policy committee, to the extent a public official goes outside their statutory role. They are then um, susceptible to and um, uh, perhaps uh, in a position to be individually liable. Ohio Revised Code twenty seven forty four oh seven provides that when a public official is sued for something that they do in their public capacity. That they're represented for free. And that if there's a judgment against them, that judgment is paid by the county. To the extent that the policy committee went outside of its rules statutorily in regulating. Um, solid waste uh, facilities and and determining whether projects could go forward as opposed to this board. Uh, there was the concern that there would be the creation of individual liability for those persons. So frankly, a balance was struck so that the policy committee could be actively involved to the extent that this board. Wants it to be and and needs it to be and feels it's productive through its employee. The concept that the board's employee would not be working at the behest of this board i- is a little silly. So should this board want the policy committee to have a role in a particular project? That is easily done by this board and that's where the discretion by law should be. The policy committee itself, we have structured the rules to have them actively involved in the process and you to have the benefit of their input.
And I appreciate that. And we certainly don't want the group that will be making those um, having those discussions and those reviews. We don't want to adversarial. Um, connection with it. We want to work together on uh, whatever we decide as it relates to the rules. I think you've. Given a good summary. I appreciate that. Um, if any of our commissioners have any direct comments um, or questions. Of Vice President Reese, um. My thought is that we move forward to items three and four. Um, since most, the majority of people here have made comments about that and also on Zoom, but if you had any comments, we certainly turn.
No questions for me then.
She said she didn't have any.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And and thank you to those that that commented both uh, from the public and from the prosecutor's office and from. The administration. Jeff Ludo is not here today, but Holly has a lot of experience with this uh, subject matter. So I appreciate your perspective. Um, and so I, and I won't belabor the point because much of um. I think what needs to be said has been said. Um, but I do want to just kind of a- at a very high level. I am, I reminded myself earlier today about, you know, why we are at this point in approving some rules. And um, you know, we were asked uh, in as was indicated in December of last year to respond. To um, a permit that had been applied for by Rumkey on the Bond Road site. And it was brought to our attention that there were uh, community concerns about that expansion. And while these rules aren't specific to anyone um, provider. Or uh, you know, in the, in the county, they they do get to this idea that we needed to have something. In place to protect the community if such an expansion or um, deviation from was already being done, was applied for. And so this location happens to be in Whitewater Township. Whitewater Township doesn't have any zoning. They're the only township in Hamilton County that doesn't have any zoning. And so the recourse then was to either go and change that in Whitewater Township. Or come to the Board of County Commissioners because that is the only recourse. In getting something done related to some of the community concerns about the the expansion. And so. The policy committee weighed in, uh, and I'm grateful for that. Uh, the Director of the Department, Michelle Balls, who is here. Uh, weighed in. It was an extensive process. Uh, there was a lot of input, uh, community input at that point and input from. The um, members of that group. We came together and forwarded some rules. I understand the frustration that um, they didn't do as much as some of the advocates wanted them to do. But we did want something that we felt was defensible in court because we assumed we were going to get sued. And then we were sued. And so um, you know, that that was not um. It was, that was not a casual thing that that we decided. We, we wanted to have something that would stand up in court. At the risk of not having any rules at all. Uh, if if these were to be dismissed and and the judge were to say, um, you know, they're, they're not reasonable. Uh, there was some fear that we wouldn't have anything left and we'd have to start all over again. And we are, there was a timing issue related to all of this as well. So. We had some rules. We felt that they were dispensable. We got sued. We are, we then, the judge said, uh, you have to mediate. You all have to get together and try to figure something out um, to come to a conclusion on this. And that's where we are today. We're looking at what was the conclusion of the negotiation. Um, I have read through the document. And um, just do want to point out because I, I don't want there to be any confusion. As to what's covered here because the original concern from the community, as I understood it. Were things like noise and pollution and odor. Um, there were some concern about the environment. Those things are captured here as uh, Pam Sears said in item ten. And they're enumerated here. And then there are examples from the Ohio Administrative Code of things that might apply. And those things are literally listed here. And so I, I think that that has been covered. And and to my view, that was one of the primary goals of the rules was to make sure that those community concerns were addressed. Um, and so we've got the rules then. And then as the process goes forward. And utilities apply for these um, applications for expansion or some kind of redo of uh, solid waste facilities. Um, it goes to the director, the expert. Um, in the administration, the policy committee is then consulted and then ultimately it goes to this board. This board has the authority to make the decision. The policy committee does not. And so the public hearing piece then is in front of this board. Uh, in similar to what we've had today, I would expect it would be more lengthy in a staff meeting. But regardless, um, we do want to hear from the public. There is a comment period uh, that's built into this. But so is the public hearing piece. And this board could decide to have more than one public hearing. We could decide to have those public hearings offsite if we wanted to. But all of that would be part of the process as it in is built into this document. And so um, I, I do want to say that. I am comfortable with passing the rules, rescinding the last, passing the um, the ones that have been agreed to. I, I appreciate the work that has been done on this uh, by our attorneys to protect the interest of the residents of Hamilton County. And so I, and and I too think that we should uh, move forward with these items because that public comment is in front of us at this time.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, sure. Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam President. Um, I, I do also want to um, step in. I know that, you know, we're. Public officials and people can say a lot of things. Um, but I do want to um. Say as it relates to Commissioner Drehouse who has uh, worked hard to navigate through this. Uh, I was new to the board and trying to grasp it and it was coming really fast and she had to navigate a lot of this. And bring it back. And there was a lot of back and forth. Um. Obviously, we can't talk about executive session, but I just want to say that there was a lot of fighting on behalf of. The citizens. But what I don't want to minimize. Just from my limited uh, understanding. I don't want to memorize. We kind of gloss over it real fast. Whitewater Township, that's also elected officials. They have to get elected. And we wouldn't even have this issue here if they had zoning. I don't want to give them off the hook. Whitewater Township chose not to have zoning. Now, they have an election and the people that live there, obviously, I don't know if they elected them, I guess so. But they didn't do any zoning from what I'm understanding, what I'm, the information that I got now. I'm still navigating through it. But from what I got and I don't like that we kind of bypass Whitewater Township. And then we get to the commissioners and it's like, here it is, uh, figure it out. And I think we're trying to, trying to do that. So um, you know, I'm not saying we're the perfect thing, but I just want to make sure as we're reporting this out. As they reported out, it didn't start with the county commissioners. It started with Whitewater Township. Decided not to do any zoning. And nothing's changed. So now it's up to the county commissioners to try to come in into a township. And clean up some of the issues. So um, I'm not saying all that to. I know some people getting mad about this, but the reality is true. And sometimes you got to tell the truth all the time. But Whitewater Township, when we're reporting this, this needs to be big. Whitewater Township. Said no to zoning and I, I don't know why. So I just wanted to, to highlight that. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuously to learn about this. I do want to thank um. The administration and the community without the community, there will be no. Uh, prosecutors and legal folks getting involved. Uh, but I was concerned that we would get sued. I don't like stuff, but they said, well, you know, you're gonna get sued, you know, because there's a cost to that. Uh, but in that negotiation, uh, I think Pam, the prosecutor, uh, in Michael, they were. Uh, coming back and bringing the legal uh, things back to us. And tried to put before us something that, you know, could be strong as possible. Uh, but also uh, legally defensible. So we'll, we'll see with that. But I do, I just want to reiterate. Because I kept asking, I said, well, how do we get all involved? They said, well, Whitewater Township, they don't have any zoning. So anyway, that's, I'm, I'm sorry. I know, I know, I, I, I got you. I know you live next to it. That's what I'm saying. That's why we're stepping in. But I do want to say that. Uh, that's kind of how we got to the situation is what I'm, what I'm told. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Uh huh, yes.
I like to disprove people of the um. There have been the reception that the OPA uh, permit application that was approved. Uh, recently uh, could have been or would have been uh, differently affected. But for the litigation and but for these new rules. And what I would like the community to understand is that that application for that permit that was recently approved. Was actually put in by Rumkey prior to the rules that we're discussing today. Uh, that already in effect, that that application was, was made to OPA before the rules were adopted by this board. Uh, in December. Therefore, that application is what we call grandfathered in. And nothing about that application could be legally successfully affected by these rules. Because these rules that we're talking about rescinding today, they do not apply to that permit application. So I just wanted to disabuse everyone.
Thank you for the clarity. Appreciate it. Let's move forward. Um, we have on our consent agenda item, item number three. No, we may have more. Yeah. No, we may have more. Yeah, we'll just do these two since they're at the top of our. Resolution number three, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a civil action involving the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, and Rumke Sanitary Landfill, Inc. and Bond Road Site, Inc. I make a motion to pass that resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese? Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, resolution rescinding the solid waste management rules, adopting new rules for the Hamilton County Solid Waste District. I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It was some suggestion, maybe we could just go through the consent. Okay, yeah, all right. Thank you. Let's move forward. We have commissioners' comments and motions. Just have a few things. I I had the weekly White House briefing that I, on the webinar, as I always do every Thursday. Just attended the OKI Board of Directors meeting today. Lots of monies for the bipartisan infrastructure bill is being submitted and that people are receiving the millions of dollars. Hamilton County is doing very well and receiving monies for infrastructure and roadways and and also for bus transportation. So really happy to see that. And then we all three attended, as I said earlier, the firefighters' Memorial Day ceremony, which was very, it was awesome. So glad that we were there and that I was there to, all three of us, to present a proclamation. And that's all I have right now. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, like you said, all three of us did attend a firefighter's memorial and certainly continue to have prayers to families who have lost their, lost a firefighter who was trying to save our lives in terms of our city and our county. Wanted to also say Blink is this weekend. Blink begins tonight. I guess they had a pre-party last night. They said they want some bikes, some bikes, but tonight they have the parade. Blink bringing in internet all over the country. They're talking about this Blink. And we are excited that we are a, we are one of the major sponsors because we knew this was economic development along with the city. I think we are the two largest sponsors in terms of that, bringing that back. And wanted to also say that this year, I think, we'll have more diversity than we have had in the past. Because, of course, our board has been committed to making sure that where we invest, there is diversity. We will have a special installation at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. And it's going to be called the Golden Garden, put together with Cincy Nice. I hope I got that right. Cincy Nice, along with Blink and Greater Cincinnati Chamber of Commerce. And all of that kicks off. It'll be located right across from the Drone Presentation. So that's a pretty popular area, right there on Marion Way. And I saw the tresses going up and the lights everywhere. So it's going to be a beautiful Golden Garden among other installations. So invite people to go down, bring their, bring their families to all the installations. And stop by the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, Golden Garden. Also, just reminding people that on next Tuesday, Tuesday, the 18th, and we will have the celebration and recognition of breast cancer survivors. And so we're inviting people to come on down. And we'll have a reception and some pictures taken at about between 12 noon and one. And then at 1 o'clock, we'll be honoring our breast cancer survivors. And then also, my office, on behalf of the board, presented proclamation to Ebony Williams on the opening of her restaurant called Flavor of the Isle in OTR, one of the new spots over the Rhine. And they're known for their jerk chicken special, jerk rub, and jerk barbecue sauces, which sounds very good because neither one of us are able to really eat. So I know we're very hungry. Madam President, I do want to call to the attention of the board. I know we all submitted different things we like to see in the budget. And I won't go over all those things. I will at a different time. But I do want to highlight, since we're talking about breast cancer and the issue of cancer, my understanding that the rates have risen in Hamilton County. And I also understand that President Joe Biden has issued funding to fight cancer. And one of the things that I would like to put forward, I'm just saying in advance, so you all know that I want to work on, is a cancer caucus that will be similar to kind of what we did with COVID, but bring people together to see that we could get, bring in more dollars, more research of not just breast cancer, but all cancers. And look at why are our rates rising? How do we begin to lower those rates? Have a measurement each year. And I just think that's something that everyone can unite behind. Everyone has been touched either themselves or a family member or scare with some type of cancer. And we've got to, as we look at environmental issues and all those things, we got to connect these dots. But we've got to start bringing this stuff down. And we've got great hospital institutions, but I want to have the hospitals, the advocates, the research. So we can, and then bring our lobbyists in Washington that we're paying to go in to bring back those dollars back to Hamilton County. And we can have a measurement, kind of like our Women and Girls Commission, great ideas they could bring up. We are one of the top healthcare providers in Hamilton County through our Intendent Care Levy. We fund healthcare at a, you know, we're one of the big players here in terms of paying for healthcare through the hospital levy. So that's what I wanted to just put that on the the table. Something that we're working on, just having some type of resolution to create this caucus of minds and brilliant minds. So we can work together and try to bring more money, more research, and Lord, we need cures. We need to stop this cancer. It's just, it's tearing us up. So I just wanted to to highlight that, something I'll be bringing forward and hope to have worked with the both of you and have support. Thank you.
Commissioner Dre House.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese, you didn't mention early voting has started. So so I'm, so I'm going to mention it. I was waiting for you. I'm like, oh, no, she's not going to say it. So early voting has started. I just want to let people know the exercise your right to vote. It's a privilege. It's a right. And and you can go to the Board of Elections or request an absentee ballot and get it delivered to your home. So just a reminder. I I too joined my colleagues at the firefighter memorial. It was a beautiful day. It was a somber occasion because we remembered those that have been lost over the past year who are firefighters, not only in the city of Cincinnati, but throughout the county and all the different fire departments. So it was a wonderful ceremony, as always. And I, and Madam President, I was glad to be on the stage with you and Commissioner Reese to deliver that resolution in honor of those that we were moralizing earlier today. I had the pleasure of providing a proclamation to Claire Mangle for the International Day of the Girl, signed by all three of us. She was honored by the YWCA at their breakfast a couple of days ago. She and Ozzy Davis were honored. But Claire is the one out in Turpin High School that was promoting their diversity day out there and went on to testify in front of Congress about what she was trying to accomplish by way of diversity and inclusion and welcoming people that of all varieties into a school setting or otherwise. And so we, I delivered the proclamation for the International Day of the Girl to Claire. She happens to also have been a member of the Commission on Women and Girls. And so we thought it was appropriate that she get that proclamation. And then lastly, I, this morning, went to the grand opening of John Arthur Flats down in Northside. So it was named after John Arthur, who is the, or former husband of Jim Obergefell. And so they were the, of course, the landmark case for marriage equality. They, in Northside, through their CDC, it's called NEST, have opened, I think it's 36 units, particularly for seniors from the LGBTQ community. And it is a beautiful facility. And Jim Obergefell was there and on husband. And so I was proud to represent the commission at that grand opening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. No agreement with BHC Fox Run Hospital doing business as Fox Run Center in the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners for its residential treatment for $300,000. Number 10 is additional residential treatment for $700,000, authorizing renewal of original agreement with ENA Incorporated doing business as Nico Center. And that's all I had that I wanted to point out. Vice President Reese, anything?
Yes, I just had a comment on, I have number eight ahead of it in the future. Can that be, we're dealing with a hospital commission. Can that be identified as hospital commission instead of the law firm?
Absolutely.
And then secondly, I brought this up to Administrator Jeff Aluvo privately, but I want to make sure to say it publicly because we're not allowed to talk to each other privately. So I wanted to bring it out. On the hospital, I know this is a refund, and that's great. But just on the, getting back to the theme of what I had talked about last week, how I want to make sure, the things I want to do now is really tear down these silos because we do a lot of work, but because they're siloed, kind of like, once we approve something, people run on. And then it's like we never did it. Even though these bonds do not hold necessarily us liable for paying them back, we still got to vote on them. So there's a reason that we got to vote. And I wanted to make sure that when the hospital, I see all this construction going on, a lot of it is from the bonds that we approve. And I want to make sure the hospital commission, our hospital commission folks are invited to the ribbon cutting. I want to make sure that we're invited to know what it is that we actually voted on. And so I did bring that up and Administrator Ludo thought that was a a good thing to bring up because the things that they're building, new wings, new technology, jobs that's being created, getting to save someone's life. We want to make sure that, you know, I don't want to just vote on this stuff. And I don't know when it happens or where it happens. I would like to see what the end results are on some of these things. So those are the only two things that that I have is that this be listed under the hospital commission if possible. And also, if, you know, once we vote on this stuff, can we find out what happens to it? When the things actually occur. So that's all that I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dre House.
Yeah, just one quick item related to item number six. So item number six is buying a car. I just want to note that, because I, this jumped out at me because of our conversations related to EVs. So, and I'm going to ask Holly to elaborate. My understanding is we have set up a committee related to studying how we can get electric vehicles into the county. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, Commissioner. Through the leadership of Environmental Services, we have a group of, oh, gosh, all across all the county, the Engineers Office, Facilities, Sheriff, Ohio Clean, Power Clean Fuels Ohio are all involved in this committee. They did have their kickoff meeting just a couple of weeks ago. So we're really excited and we'll keep, be sure to keep the board up to date on their progress. I just wanted to note that progress.
That's great. Yeah. Thank you. And also, Vice President Reese, not just for you, but Michael Dean is on the phone from Dinsmore to talk if anybody had any questions about item eight. But I don't know if you had any.
No, I didn't have any question. I just think the way it's listed on here and and the fact that once they get it and they, you know, we'd like to know what happened with it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Michael Dean, for being on the phone. We appreciate it. Okay, we will move forward then with no further. Commissioner Dre House, did you?
That's it.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt items five through 11.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you. With no further business to come before the board, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimmison?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Yes.
Thank you.